Okay, we have Barbara Dykes, Abe Jacobson, Dan and Traxler. It's a special meeting?
Yeah, we're not special.
We'll have our comments after.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Dykes and I am from Salish Law, P L L C. And the address is 909 Harris Avenue, Suite 201H, Bellingham 98225. I'm here representing the City of Bellingham. The City is deeply concerned with this process and has commented a number of times. I hope you've had time to read the complete record in this process. For your information, the most recent comments the City has made were on March 29th and April 5th. I hope you take the time to study these letters before you make any recommendation. I'm here tonight to briefly highlight some of the concerns the Cities has in this process. One of the large concerns is the City has not been consulted on any of these changes. City planners have not been consulted. There is a GMA requirement for coordination with the City when planning is done that impacts the City's borders and infrastructure. And that has not been done, that has not occurred since 2009. And the changes that are before you tonight do impact the City's infrastructure greatly. And I want to talk to you a little bit about how that is. There are lamyards that circle the City here. There are approximately nine of them. And they impact the nine arterials that come into the City. There are maps in the record that show this directly, that we submitted those with our March 29th letters that Bellingham planners came up with. These lamyards will create sprawl at all of the City's main arterials coming into the City. We're very concerned about the impact to the infrastructure and the resulting traffic that will come into the City and how these lamyards will be served by, what infrastructure. We're not aware of how these lamyards will be served by infrastructure. So that's a real concern. Sprawl at the borders of the City will be problematic in terms of how the City will grow beyond it or into it because sprawl densities are difficult to redevelop into urban densities. So that will create a real problem for the City in coming years. Another large issue for the City is the impact to the Lake Wacom watershed from the densities resulting from the City's redesignations in the various lamyards. We do applaud the City, or the County, for taking the Emerald Lake, part of the area out of the Emerald Lake lamyrd, or whatever it is called, the planning area. But we do believe that there ought to be more thought given to how the watershed should be zoned and designated, given the serious water quality problems we have with Lake Wacom and the fact that the water quality is degrading quickly. There are 2010 studies in the record that show that we have severely degrading water quality with phosphorus loading, fecal coliform and the rest. And adding more septic systems into the area will only increase this and adding more stormwater. So that's another issue that's of great concern to the City. We would ask the Planning Commission to put the brakes on this process. You have the power to do that. You can recommend the minimum changes that you adopted in 2009 and ask the Council to go forward to the Board with the minimum changes and go back to the drawing board and look at these lamyards. Do the proper capital facility planning for these lamyards that needs to happen before they're adopted to avoid going up the ladder to the hearings Board again, to court again, and coming back to do this process again because that's where you will be headed if we keep going this route. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Question? Question please?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Dykes, I've read your March 29th letter from Dan Pike. I assume that you were involved in drafting that letter, correct? And this one as well, we just got tonight. But on the subject of traffic and the traffic impact to the City of Bellingham from the Lambert developments, you listed a number of them here. Has the City done any studies as to the effect of the establishment of these Lamberts on these arterials? Are there any traffic studies that have been done by the City or contracted by the City of Bellingham with private consultants to do to justify these concerns?
Well, it's impossible to do that because the target keeps changing. The building size went from 10,000 to 12,000 to 22,000 square feet in the last, you know, 15 days. And so the sizes change, you know? It's been a very fast-moving target in this process. And so in the last month, there's been a tremendous amount of change and it's really difficult for anyone to keep up with, let alone a City that, you know, is trying to plan for growth and development. It's just obvious from the size of these lamyards and the lack of any control on the development within the zoning part of it that the possibilities for an Aurora strip-type development along the guide is obvious. And so there's going to be a lot of traffic impacts from it.
Thank you. And another question. In the March 29th letter, you referenced that case, Save v. Bothell, which I did not have an opportunity to read. Can you just give me a quick idea as to what the holding was in that case and how it relates to the topic under discussion tonight?
Well, Save v. Bothell, let me go back to my letter here and...
I never lose an opportunity to get some free legal advice.
Well, you know, you get what you pay for, what can I tell you? Let's see if I can find the...
I'd just like to know how that relates to the letter which was sent to us with regard to this rural element thing. And they quoted Save v. Bothell. Outside, under these circumstances, Bothell may not act and disregard the effects outside of its boundaries where the potential exists that a zoning action will cause serious environmental effect outside jurisdictional borders. The zoning body, I guess us, must serve the welfare of the entire affected community.
Right.
So I'm not familiar with the facts there. I see it's a 78 case though, it's been around for a while. Is that still current law?
Yes, it is still current law. It's a Supreme Court case. It's still good law. The whole idea is that inter-jurisdictional planning is necessary, that counties must plan with cities in order to be consistent with one another. The whole idea is that you can't plan in a box and not consider... This particular case was a SEPA case, but the idea is the same, that you have to look at jurisdiction's impacts. Your jurisdiction has an impact on another jurisdiction. Cars move from Wacom County into Bellingham. When you put new development on the guide, it's going to bring new cars, new trips to those businesses. Those businesses are going to come from, or those cars are going to come to those businesses. They're going to drive back into Bellingham. It's going to put more cars and trucks along the guide. They're going to use the guide and they're going to go into Bellingham. It's going to produce a lot more traffic.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Commissioner Bill.
Yes.
You said that the process had been moving quickly. Did you do any traffic studies from the 2009 plan when that was stationary?
No, you know, it's not incumbent upon the City to do traffic planning for the County. The idea is the County should be working with the City to study those inter-jurisdictional impacts.
I understand, but your answer was that it had been a moving target so you hadn't done any traffic studies because it was a moving target. But in reality, you don't do traffic studies because of...
The City does all kinds of traffic studies. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head if they did do studies related to the 2009. Thank you.
Abe Jacobson.
Good evening, I'm Abe Jacobson and I live at 2314 Samish Way, Bellingham, Wacom County. And I'd like to comment on the amendments to the Comp Plan. Comment one regards the Guide Meridian, which has substantial changes to the map for the Comp Plan Lambert. The Lambert mod 2011, I believe, around Smith and Guide Meridian is really unnecessary. The 2009 version was more appropriate. This is taking a big leap toward making basically a continuous urban connection between Linden and Bellingham. And just because state taxpayers paid $270 million to modernize the road, we shouldn't assume that was done to provide a development bonanza for development along that corridor. The charter for that $270 million of taxpayer money for the Guide modernization was to improve transportation between the Canadian border and Linden and I-5 in Bellingham. It was not to provide a development corridor. So this strikes me as really inappropriate to infill and build a commercial strip along there. Secondly, extending the Southern Valley Lambert northwestward along the lake's coastline is opposite from protecting the lake's water for beneficial use, as Mr. Kremen has promised to do. The 2009 Commission recommendation did not add that northwestward extension along the coast. And I recommend that you stay with that. Now switching to process. On March 9th, it was publicly known, after Mr. Stahlheim testified before Council, that to obey the law, this matter would need to be remanded to you, to the Commission. That was March 9th, which was seven weeks ago. And obviously, that message didn't get through. And your esteemed legal counsel came up with this fact late, when it had been discovered on March 9th. And I'm curious why there was that delay. Because I'm really impressed with the work that you can do when you have time, like the work you've been doing with the Wind Ordinance shows dedicated research. And you put your research hats on and you do good work. But with a 24-hour turnaround, there's no way for that kind of reflection and sifting of data. So I just wonder, you know, what's the story? On March 9th, anybody listening to Mr. Stahlheim would have known that to be compliant with state law, you had to have this meeting. And yet, the wheels didn't get turning until a few weeks later. I'm just curious why this is so compressed that today we're having the public hearing, after you've had your work session, by the way, and 24 hours before the matter could be disposed by County Council. So, you know, I would agree with one of the previous speakers. You're all good people. The drunks come out at night and are on our roads. Get home early, drive safely, get off the roads before the drunks are there. And, you know, a Kabuki theater is fun, but it's not worth dying for. And this is Kabuki theater. You're all good people.
Commissioner Les.
Mr. Jacobson, just for your information, that letter of March 9th was submitted as part of the public record at this meeting shortly before it commenced at 5:00, referring to Mr. Stahlheim's letter.
Thank you. Dan and Traxler.
Dan and Traxler, 709 Dupont Street. And I haven't had the pleasure of speaking in front of this Planning Commission, so thanks for being here. I'm happy to be here. First, I want to say that the expectation that you perform a review of the rural element in three hours and make an informed recommendation is incomprehensible to me. As you know, the Council made many, many changes to the Comp Plan text and to the maps and to the zoning. So it is also incomprehensible to me that you were not also asked to review the zoning. I understand what the statute requires, but if we're looking at a meaningful review here, it seems that the two should be reviewed together. This limited review with such a narrow scope leaves no room for a meaningful review and it seems that you're being strictly confined when it's not contemplated by the statute. I'm here on behalf of the Celine family, the owners of Governor's Point. As you may know, the Council previously voted to include Governor's Point in a Type 1 Lambert. Later, that was rescinded after the Executive threatened to veto the entire plan if Governor's Point were included, along with a couple of other issues. Over the course of this process, we've submitted reams of documentation and comments in support of Governor's Point and the Chukonut area's built environment and the appropriateness of its inclusion in a Lambert. Even so, it subsequently came to light that the veto threat was made without review of anything that we had submitted in the record. Our submissions have continued to be ignored despite Growth Board decisions in support of our position. And to our knowledge, no written analysis of the Chukonut area has ever been done. The way this went down was wrong. It was wrong. Since then, the Council has downzoned Chukonut to R-5 with a residential overlay, which is completely inconsistent with the historical and current character of the area, which is built out at approximately one unit per acre. This has the practical effect of basically only impacting Governor's Point. However, the Chukonut area has been kept from your review, which is also incomprehensible. Proposed Policy 2 GG 3 of the Comp Plan creates a residential overlay designation for some rural and rural residential areas, which includes Governor's Point. Although the overlay is implemented by the Development Regulations in our zoning code, it is a Comp Plan construct and it should have been shown on the Comp Plan maps as a revision that you should have had a chance to review. Instead, it was only shown on the zoning maps thereby preventing your review. Why weren't you given the opportunity to review those areas that the residential overlay impacts? Why weren't the effects of the residential overlay and its criteria explained to you? It was an entirely new Comp Plan creation. The fact is, this process was never meant to be a meaningful review by you, but rather a rubber stamp. And I don't really think that's what you want. I'm here out of frustration. My clients have owned Governor's Point since 1960. Its zoning has been the same for 40 years. Despite everything we've submitted, despite clear evidence of built environment, despite logical outer boundaries, despite Growth Board decision in support, we have been downzoned against all logic. And no one can give us a reason why, although the politics of it are blatantly obvious. The new Council and the Planning Commission were elected and appointed to prevent this sort of blatant and politically-driven attack on property rights from occurring. And I ask you to please request that you are given an opportunity to meaningful review this rural element update, not just for Governor's Point, but for every property owner involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Could you state your name?
Hi, my name's Rob Wilson. I live at 2346 Tree Farm Court, Bellingham, Washington. And I find it a privilege to speak before you today. I'd just like to comment on what Gary said earlier today in regards to assuring there's words in these plans and everything that affects future properties to support people that have non, or will have non-conforming commercial properties. Myself, for example, I started my project probably 12 years ago. It's in the south part of Wacom County, kind of kiddie corner to the firing range. So you have the firing range on one side and you have the highway on the other with an on-ramp wrapping around it. I've put every penny I've had over the last 12 years into that project and soon it'll become a non-conforming commercial. Yet it has a highway on one side and a gun range on the other and an on-ramp on the south side of it. There should be even more strength added to what Gary said and maybe something that, you know, future lanyards, or however you pronounce that, and zoning changes will be offered to remove non-conforming titles. It's one thing if you have a retirement plan and money in the bank and your kids are through college. My son's seven years old and this is my plan if he wants to go to MIT to pay for it. And now what's being done is, I'm fully vested at Bob Toll's recommendation. We did a, we subdivided the property. We have all of our building applications have been accepted. So we're well vested, but now you're putting me in a position where bankers are going to be scared to make loans. Future tenants are going to be saying, "Why is it residential, you know? What can we do?" Maybe the County in time is going to say, "Well, when you submitted your application, it was for professional offices, so you can't do the 40 other things that were on the list." There should be an avenue for me to become a GC commercial. GC commercial is almost identical to what TC commercial was. And I'm going to submit a paper today that really shows that comparison. And you guys will actually make the property less value, or everybody involved. Because if I'm held to what we applied for as far as only professional offices and we don't have the latitude to look at other things, it's less value for what can be offered to the community in that area. There's probably other better leases and uses of that property down on the south end. Small guys that want to work, this is what it was designed for. Guys that want to work in Skagit and Wacom. People that have small engineering firms and want to work between the refineries in Anacortes and the refineries up at Cherry Point. It's a perfect location. And I'm vested, I'm going to be in there, I'm going to build the buildings if it goes through like it is and I can't push towards it. You're going to hopefully get to know me over the years because I want to retain that. I want to become a Land Year 3 and have GC commercial. And it will enhance the community because then I'll be back to the ability to offer a lot more as far as services go. So I hope you'll beef up at this point what Gary said and get to know my name in the future. And maybe help myself and the church next door become a Land Year 3 and retain a GC commercial title. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
We have a question.
What is the address of your property, sir?
That's a great question. As I said, the south side of the property, the on-ramp wraps around it. And on the north side, you have, there's the Korean church down there. We're kind of kiddie cornered to the gun club, across the highway from the Shell station that's been there ever since I used to drive to my grandmother's at Point Roberts from Issaquah.
Oh, okay, so it's east of the freeway, or east of the Shell station?
That's right.
Is there an exit number? What exit is it?
Great question. You'd think I'd know after 12 years.
Okay.
I think it's North Lake Samish Road, is that correct?
Pardon me?
North Lake Samish Road, is that...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, there is a small reserve fire station right there also.
Yeah.
It's exactly kiddie corner from that property.
I got it.
And that on-ramp there.
And that's one of the maps that didn't change.
I beg your pardon?
That's one of the maps that did not change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Okay, real simply, this is a letter I sent to the County Council on March 29th. It deals with the Lambert 1 proposed for I-5 Birch Bay Linden Road, Valley View Road. The one which you, Planning Commission members who were on the Commission in 2009 will remember you were going to put in R-10A. And the new Council has recommended about 16 acres of Lambert there. And if you look at Exhibit B on the letter I just gave you, you can see where it's located. Rural community. Okay, now, Exhibit A in that letter, with the pink circle around it, is the photo that Futurewise submitted to the County Council when the 2005 comprehensive plan was being considered. This is what Futurewise said the Lambert at I-5 and Birch Bay Linden Road should look like, rather than the Gateway Industrial, which took up a lot more land. I know about this because I was one of the attorneys that worked on Gold Star v. Futurewise, v. Wacom County, went to the Supreme Court and back, all of that. And I just want you to know that, at least in 2005, Futurewise took the position that what's surrounded by the circle was an acceptable Lambert for that interchange. And the only other thing I would add to that is that there's an error in the Comp Plan at page 14. And I sent Gary an email about this today and we discussed it briefly. But the bottom of page 14, where you designate the rural communities, in the first sentence of that last paragraph, you should substitute, quote, "Birch Bay hyphen Linden Amphersand Valley View", unquote, "in between Acme and Kane Lake". That's where the Comp Plan provides a list of those areas that are designated as rural communities. And because they're in alphabetical order, Birch Bay Linden and Valley View should go in that spot. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good evening, Steve Hood with the Department of Ecology. And geez, thanks, you guys have had a long, long afternoon. Also in the record from March 29th would be a letter from my supervisor, Richard Groot. And I just wanted to emphasize that we're concerned both about the zoning, which I understand is not up for discussion, but also the portion that addresses Lake Wacom in your comprehensive plan updates. And our concern is that it seems contrary to all the effort that's being undertaken by the Wacom County Administration and Department of Ecology in protecting the lake and the work that we've done to identify the sources of pollution to the lake, to weaken the language that identifies that residential development is our issue. We've had, you know, lots of time working with the County. They've hired a number of consultants to review our work. And in those discussions, you know, while we don't all come to a consensus on what we need to do all the time, there is a consensus that it is the residential population that is causing the changes in the lake. And so we're really concerned about the weakening from residential being the cause, the primary cause, to residential maybe a cause and what that would mean in the future about decisions we might make. Thank you.
Thank you.
That up right now. We discussed this this afternoon, Gary, did we change that? Did we delete "may"?
No, that wasn't one of the preliminary votes that was passed.
In other words, it was suggested, but it went down to defeat.
I don't recall exactly the wording that was discussed, but no.
It's in here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd actually had come, but had another engagement, had to leave before you got to that element, so I wasn't able to speak to it if I'd had an opportunity this afternoon. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming down. You're from Seattle, aren't you?
No, from Bellingham.
Oh, okay. Okay, in your professional opinion, because we did discuss this this afternoon, the cause of the phosphorus loading being forest practices or residential development, have you determined what proportion is causing the phosphorus loading in the lake based on your professional opinion, development versus forestry?
Yeah, it's a little confusing the way we make... In our assessment, we're looking at when the rules are followed. So we're not looking at people, you know, what's this, you know? So your description refers to past practices or violations of the current code. And, you know, we have to acknowledge that those are large, but we really can't quantify what those are. So when we look at properly followed forest practices, all of the best scientists that we worked with said, "We couldn't get a better estimate of what a natural condition was than those forest areas that are under forest management." That, you know, looking at a pristine watershed and trying to make the translation from that to the climatic conditions of Lake Wacom would introduce a greater error than just assuming that those forest practices that are being properly implemented represented our natural condition. So, you know, the residential is really the big portion. There's definitely poor practices that can have short-term catastrophic events. But every day what's going on is really the residential development.
Thank you.
I was hoping that was...
Question. Excuse me. What was the date of the letter that you said you sent?
What was the date of the letter that you said you sent in?
The 29th of March.
Twenty-nine.
I think you got a lot of letters that day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, commission members. I'm Roger Almskar, land use consultant at 1300 West Action Road in Ferndale. My main concern tonight is the, comes from the, what I see firsthand almost every day of my working life of the effects of policies and regulations on ordinary people who want to do something with their land or run a business or start one. One thing that I keep thinking about on this project, and I know a lot of hard work has gone into it, that I think the present draft that the county council and the planning department have generated is a lot better balanced among the different interest groups and points of view and the law itself than the previous draft. So I do urge you to support this, the draft. And I have no idea which changes you might have taken votes on today. I could make some technical suggestions, but I just want to make one. If you look at, and you look at page 10 of the comprehensive plan draft, it's under the rural designation, Goal 2G, it's one of the policies. Please note at 2GG5 at the bottom of the page. I think that the, I can, I don't have a problem with the intent of that, but the wording, I think, is pretty ambiguous. And for instance, you look at the very last clause and the conversion of farm and forest land to non-resourced uses. Well, is that supposed to be inside the rural zone or inside the resource land zone? I'm not sure which way it would go, frankly. Maybe perhaps Mr. Davis could explain that one. I never really noticed this until today. And I think if it is focusing on land within the rural zone, whether it's two-acre lots or 10-acre lots, that isn't really fair if the land is just sitting there and nobody's using it. So we're saying that in effect, if I had 20 acres or 40 acres there and somebody said, "Well, gee whiz, that's forest land," you can't do a cluster, an ag protection overlay short plot. And I think that's a problem. So I don't, again, don't quarrel with the intent, but I think that the language is a problem. So I would urge you to be cautious about changes and I hope that you'll be able to finish up your work on it this evening and send it forward. I do have a couple of clients in the North Bellingham area who are waiting, have been waiting for several months now to do small short plots. North Bellingham area is almost, is about 900 some acres. There's hardly any land left in there that isn't built on or already subdivided down to the minimum. The two biggest pieces are cemeteries, you know where they are. So I would like to see you move this ahead tonight to the county council so that they can adopt it tomorrow. Not just for that reason, but I think the reason you don't see very many people here tonight is the word fatigue. People are really tired of this and I know it'll never be perfect. It's time to move on and adopt it. And for those who say it's allowing too much sprawl, as it is right now, the plan, the zoning downzones about 6,000 acres. So it is having quite an effect on some people, but I'm still recommending that you pass it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Question, Roger, sir. I read your letter of March 14th. I guess that pertains a bit to your, to your statements tonight on policy 2GG5, which is, which is on page 11 of our packet, I believe, at the top. I didn't quite understand the, your message here. So if you can enlighten me here. Minimize potential conflicts of rural residential development near designated resource lands to prevent adverse impacts on resource land uses and the conversion of farm and forest land to non-resourced uses. You suggest we add something on inside the?
Not necessarily. I think if you, if you look at it and when you get to line three where we have resource land uses, if there was a period there and the rest of it went away, the ambiguity would go away. That's the, I think that's the problem. And I, I don't claim to have all the answers, but I do work with these things almost every day and I, I see a problem there in administration.
Well, yeah, and we, actually, we were racing by the time we got through because there was no, I don't think there was any discussion at all on this page because we voted on each page.
Sure.
And that didn't, that didn't come out.
Well, perhaps.
I wish we'd had this public hearing before, so, before the work session. Anyhow, so you're suggesting that on policy 2GG5, that we put a period after natural resource lands?
Well, I still think it has a lot of effect if you, if you take the last clause away and, but I, there may be a better solution. You may want to hear what Mr. Davis has to say about it.
Well, he's to advise. We're here to try to, you know, set some policy here.
Right.
I still don't, I still don't understand exactly the verbiage you're suggesting here that we, that on policy 2GG5 is what you testified to.
Right.
Okay. You're suggesting after resource lands, we stop?
Well, resource land uses, period.
Resource land, so land uses, not lands.
Land uses. Excuse me. I meant resource land uses, period. And where it says "and," take that out and the rest of it out.
Oh, okay.
It could be better said, no doubt, but I think that's, that takes the ambiguity away from it.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Jean Melias from Nosiman LLP. I'm representing participants Stahlheim, Brackey, Harris and Hurst, all of whom can and often do speak for themselves. I wish I had something new to say, you know? Two years ago, you were up here. I, well, some of you were up here. We submitted a letter this morning that included the minutes of that hearing talking about rural character, some of the elements that have since been taken out of the comprehensive plan. In addition, I don't know if you had a chance to look at, at the letter that we submitted this morning. Just to run through it real briefly, we talked a little bit about rural character and then summarized the issues that we have all raised in our letters over time. And that goes on for a few pages about the changes that have been made since the last planning commission recommendation. And then in addition, we talk about public participation and compliance with the Planning Enabling Act, all of the reasons that you should be considering zoning changes tonight even though you're not allowed to because of the way this public hearing was set up. I really wish I'd been here for the votes that you took before the public hearing. I think that that would have been interesting. In addition, the letter talks a little bit about some other issues, some of which you can't necessarily consider because they have to do with zoning. One is the fact that since the 2009 Planning Commission recommendation, there's been a recommendation for increased density in the county's only wildlife corridor within its critical areas ordinance with information on that. A little bit of discussion about the new size limitations, particularly in the type one lammard, which is a really interesting concept where the size limitations, there don't appear to be any size limitations as long as there is some determination of a use that was similar to something in 1990 in some area, completely standardless limitation that results in no limitation within those areas. A little bit about the Lake Waukam watershed that's already been talked about. And then setbacks from agricultural land. The suggestion that we made in our letter was that you might want to follow Skagit County because Skagit County has an agricultural land protection policy and, you know, we're the next county north and also concerned about our agricultural industry. And in Skagit County, that setback's 200 feet in order to make sure that agricultural uses can continue to operate. And finally, the failure to comply with SEPA, the fact that the county hasn't looked at any environmental impacts of the proposed revisions since the time the planning commission looked at this in 2009. So that's that letter. Also, I just want to talk about why we would raise these issues. I was just reading a growth management hearings board decision from October 2010 and it talked about critical areas first. And it, the statement the hearings board made was critical areas are the natural infrastructure and the foundation of a landscape. And then the hearings board talks about natural resource lands, agricultural lands. And it says, "The legislature gave further guidance about conserving these lands with the statement that such regulations shall ensure that the use of land adjacent to agriculture, forests shall not interfere with the continued use of these designated lands. By this statement, the legislature was not only concerned about the uses on the natural resource land, but also the surrounding lands in order to limit public controversy about the continued use of natural resource lands that often conflicts with residential or other commercial uses." And then the hearings board said, "As with critical areas that must be designated using best available science, the legislature gave clear direction that natural resource lands are a foundation around which other land uses must be adjusted. The natural resource land functions have a priority over other functions on that land or even on adjacent lands." So if you're thinking about guidance or reactions to changes made, one possible policy you might want to recommend is to make sure that the comp plan protects the agricultural industry by making sure that that industry can continue to function. And thank you all for putting in your time today and I don't envy you for your long day here.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Actually, can I?
Oh, Jean, Ms. Melias?
You made it sound like the designation that we were given for changing the map was something, somewhere nebulous was found here and therefore we just opened the floodgates. It was very specific and it wasn't just something, somewhere. It's not like somebody found a tin can on a lot and decided it should be a kitchen. We looked at the designation and we had, got the opportunity to ask questions about that and what was there. And in some cases, it was a single-family home at one point.
I'm sorry. What designation are you talking about?
And that wasn't changed. You, you essentially said that it was a no standard whatsoever. You said, your quote was essentially no standard. When we expanded some of these designations.
So you're talking about the size limitation within the lammard one?
I'm talking about, you were talking about our criteria for, for maintaining the lines. And the criteria was very.
What I was talking about specifically was the size, the building size limitation in the type one lammard. Is that what you're referring to as well?
No.
Oh, okay.
What's the question?
I'm just responding to you when you said it was, it was ambiguous and we were very clear about when we looked at those lines to ask the questions about why they were changed and what they were there for. It wasn't as willy-nilly as you made it sound. I took personal offense to that.
Wait, wait. I don't think that, maybe I was speaking too fast. I don't think you understood what I said.
That's a possibility because I don't listen very quickly.
Okay. We do have in the record comments on the boundaries of the type one lammards. And in my letter, I included a link to the slides that David Stahlheim made to show which lammard boundaries we disagree with and those slides also explain why. I was talking about something different. I was talking about the building size standard within type one lammards, which says 12,000 square feet unless there was a similar use in 1990 in some area that was zoned the same. And in that case, there appears to be no size limitation at all. So that's what I was talking about specifically.
Clarification noted.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gary, smiling. David Stahlheim, city of, I live in Bellingham. I'm also, like Roger, a land use consultant. I just don't get paid any longer for that. So in my evenings and weekends, I spend reviewing what's going on in Waukam County. And actually, I've been waiting about three years to agree with Danan Traxler on something and I found it tonight. And so thank you, Danan, for raising the issues about why is this hearing not also covering zoning issues? Why are you not covering that issue? I don't get to the same result as Danan does with her client at Governor's Point, but the issue that, that this does not cover the zoning issues of which the public is very interested in, and I know several of you being farmers with respect to agricultural setbacks, things like that, you should be interested in specifically. In that letter that was referred to earlier that I wrote on March 9th of this year, I also identified the part of the state law that says this does have to come back to the planning commission for zoning issues as well. And so let me read you out of the Planning Enabling Act. It says, "The county council, to initiate consideration of these amendments, shall first refer the proposed official control, which is a zoning amendment, or amendment to the planning agency for report, which shall thereafter be considered and processed in the same manner as set forth in RCW 367630 regarding a change in the recommendation of the planning agency. Requires a public hearing, requires a report from the planning commission. You are the planning agency for Waukam County." So I don't understand why that was not also referred back as a full package. For example, and Jean Melias commented, if you made a change to any one of your comprehensive plan maps and you change the boundaries of that, what also has to happen in order to be consistent? You have to change the zoning map as well. So you can only give half the recommendation, tell the council, "Oh, you have to change the other part because we can't make recommendations on it." It makes no sense whatsoever. I don't understand why that, that happened as part of this. We know that this has a lot of fatal flaws in this. I think everyone knows here that this is going to the hearings board and that this is going to be a challenge and that there's a lot of issues that are going on. There's no additional State Environmental Policy Act review done on all the changes that the county council made. So the environmental review, which was signed two years ago, no additional review. We have two new rezones. We have one in High Notes Corner, one in Wisser Lake. There are new commercial rezones that was never subject to a public hearing in front of the planning commission, never subject to any kind of environmental review that is now going forth without any State Environmental Policy Act review, any public hearing in front of this planning commission. Procedural flaws with respect to this. These things have to be taken care of. We submitted a lot of different comments within the record on this thing. The boundaries, I've traveled every one of the boundaries except for Point Roberts. That was a pretty logical utter boundary when we did that. The water, didn't think we have to travel those boundaries. But every one of these, I have traveled, looked at those boundaries. And when you look at, for example, the guide Meridian, think about the pattern of sprawl that is going on and think about all the development that is allowed within that area and whether or not that's going to meet the test of growth management. We're not allowed to talk about Kitec. Kitec is an application that is before the county. And so when you tie the urban growth area of Bellingham, Kitec and all the type one lammards that have now been done, we have basically sprawl all the way up and down the guide. Do you think that's going to survive the growth management test? I don't think so. Now, the county council also took off lock coverage. Now you can have unlimited buildings and structures in all of these commercial industrial areas under the zoning code, but you guys can't talk about that tonight. There's no limits on that. So they, they scaled down some of the size of buildings within these commercial industrial areas, but it doesn't matter. Gary knows how to do it. He separated by a foot. Put a firewall in between it and you can have another building. Cover the whole thing in buildings. How much traffic is that going to generate? How much stormwater is that going to generate? Is there any kind of environmental review that's been done on any of this stuff?
30 seconds, please.
Do you really think this is going to survive the test? It's not. What will survive the test is what was passed in 2009. And what really should happen is that people should get together. There's different sides to this. They should negotiate this deal out, work it out into a compromise so that we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anybody? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.